I'd like to welcome everyone to the Village of Northfield Regular Council Meeting of March 28, 2018. So, rise for the pledge place.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Magistrally.
Here.
Mr. Cher.
Here.
Ms. Domsalsky.
Here.
Mr. Hips.
Here.
Ms. Noack.
Here.
Mr. Voitish.
Here.
Mr. Bryan.
Here.
Lieutenant Zemec.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
And I'm present.
Approval of the minutes?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Noack, seconded by Mr. Hips, for approval of the minutes of the March 14, 2018 meeting. Any questions, amendments? Hearing none. All in favor of approval?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Minutes approved, Mayor.
At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address us at this time? Either myself, or council, or department heads? Mr. Wickin.
Mayor, council. I think I've brought this up once before, and I'm gonna refresh your memory on this. I woke up Saturday morning, and looked out the window about 7:30, and nothing's more surprising than to see rubbish already piled out in their front lawn. And I'm bringing this up because we're supposed to have somebody, I guess a couple of the police departments, going around and notifying these people that you're not supposed to do this. And then I noticed Sunday around, oh, maybe 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, Cranbrook, rubbish is starting to pile up and going out.
Is this in the afternoon or the evening?
Pardon?
The afternoon?
Well, you figure about 12 o'clock, 11, 12 o'clock. And being that we have it, that's not supposed to go out till at least after 6 o'clock on Sunday night. But what bothers me is that we're going into summer. You're gonna have people coming, visiting, parties going on, all this going on, and they have to drive up these streets on the east side and see rubbish parked out there on a Monday delivery and it's already sitting out there on a Sunday. I just wonder if we can have more police obligated to stop and...
Brad, what is our ordinance state?
Yeah, I think it's 6 o'clock. It sounds about right on the day before. I don't, I mean, I thought one time it was sundown, but I think it's earlier. But 11:00 in the morning is not within the ordinance.
It's supposed to be at sundown.
I'll check, for sure. But we'll figure it out and let you know and talk to the police department about it.
I'll talk to the chief tomorrow about it.
Okay, and I've only talked about the east side of Route 8, because we got that Monday collection. Okay, that's...
Just to let you know that I know that the policemen are doing it, because there's somebody on my street that is constantly getting cited for it, and they've decided to move because of all the citations.
Why doesn't he just leave his rubbish in his garage?
I know, exactly. I mean, it's, they haven't even been in the house a year, and their garbage cans are always out there, and they're always getting cited. So, when I was making my walks, I asked...
We cite a lot of people every week.
Yes. They are doing it, but...
Oh, God.
Zombox out there all the time knocking on doors, so...
Okay. I know you're all aware of this.
But during the week.
Bring it back up. Thank you.
Reports of municipal officers. The mayor would just like to report that McDonald's, I think it's gonna be done around April 20th. Let's just cross our fingers for good weather for them to complete that on time. Moving on to the finance director, Ms. Agassia.
I have no report, thank you.
Moving on to the engineer, who is not present at this time, will be at our next regular scheduled council meeting. Moving on to law director, Brad Bryan.
Thank you, Mayor. First, simple recyclingism, getting the information they need to start. There should be information going out to the residents sometime soon, next month, and the tentative start date is the week of May 21st, 2018, that they're looking to start service. So, and I'd like to thank, Lisa Rodriguez has been doing a lot of work getting the information they need, and they seem to be very happy and excited to start service in the village. We also have the mayor's court report for the dispersal for February 2018 for acceptance. Total to be dispersed $20,950.01. Total due to the state, $2,411.05. Total due to Stowe Municipal Court, zero. Total due City of Stowe, $73.05. Total dispersed for restitution, $773.26. Total due to the village, $17,691.75. Is there a motion for acceptance?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Domsalsky, seconded by Mr. Voitish. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Okay. That's all I have, Mayor.
Moving on to the department heads. Police Chief John Locas will be at our next regular scheduled council meeting. Fire Chief is not present, but Joe Zemec is. Joe?
No report this time, Mayor.
Okay, moving on to service and building superintendent, Mr. Walters.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I did submit a report, a couple of things that I wanted to go over. Ledge Road, we do have a pre-construction meeting set for tomorrow morning, actually. And then I would imagine we're gonna probably get a start date. Last I spoke with the contractor, they're wanting to start the storm water work, or the storm, the pipe work and stuff, ditch elimination, things like that first. And they wanna start quickly, so we should know more tomorrow, and we'll make sure everybody understands what's going on from there. The other couple of things is the salt truck. We are moving forward. The pricing of buying a new truck was just out of hand. Talking with our mechanic, going through everything, the cheapest thing for us to do. We still have a very good truck. We are gonna go ahead and replace that flatbed with the dump body and the pump. In the report I gave, there was a misprint of the number. It'll be 28917. The only work we have from there is we're gonna replace the electronic brake box that the salt has gotten to, which will be much better protected once we get that dump bed on there and the cab over, so the salt can't really find its way from the top. And it kinda just sits on top of that box and a few other electrical components. We were at well over $100,000 to buy a new truck, and, you know, this is, like I said, the truck's got less than, it's right around 6,000 miles on it, so there's no point in getting rid of it. To look at it, you would think there's no issues with it. So, we will need approval to spend that money on that truck, and then once we get the, all the quotes for getting them parts, and then Bryan, which will be far less than that, but we did prepare for up to about $50,000, but we should be pretty well under that, all said and done. The other thing I need approval for is the street sweeping. Riley Street Sweeping, they come in, and I wanna get approval up to $3,300 to get the entire town swept, all of our streets, and...
Jason, is that something you want tonight?
If possible.
Ms. Domsalsky, is that something that you would like to do tonight?
Yeah, we can definitely do that this evening.
I think that's, oh, the other thing...
Hold on, Jason, let's get that done.
Okay.
I'd like to make that motion for Riley Sweeping.
Second.
Cut. It's to approve the village retain Riley Sweeping, to sweep the village streets for an amount not to exceed $3,300. A motion made by Ms. Domsalsky, seconded by Mr. Voitish. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion's approved. Yeah, and also, I think we're looking for a motion to approve the purchase of the dump bed from Truck Equipment Sales LLC in an amount not to exceed $23,000.
28917.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Domsalsky, seconded by Mr. Voitish. Any questions or discussion? All in favor of approval?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
And I'll need one more motion, if council's willing. Month of May, the spring cleanup.
Yeah, we took care of that last week, so...
Sorry, I wasn't here for that one. Didn't get it. Alright, good. Other than that, I really have nothing else to report of than what's on the sheet.
Jason, just a question. When you have the meeting tomorrow, can you let me know when the start is going to be? Please?
Being that you said please.
I always say please. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does that complete your report?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Moving on to reports of municipal boards and commissions. Mr. Hips with planning commission.
No report this evening.
Recreation Board will meet April 5th at 6:30 here at council chambers to discuss our next project, which will be moving in the park. But I also wanna kinda go over everything that happened at the Easter egg hunt to make sure there's nothing that we wanna change or upgrade for next year. So, it'll be a good meeting. Yeah. Okay, we'll do it at the end. Okay, reports of the standing committee. It's Mr. Magistrally of Finance.
Excuse me. This evening's finance meeting was rescheduled for Monday, 7:30. That's April 2nd. That concludes, Mr. Mayor.
Moving on to Rosen Public Works, Mrs. Domsalsky.
No report this evening, Mayor.
Moving on to Health and Welfare, Mr. Cher.
No report.
Moving on to Wages and Working Conditions, Mr. Voitish.
No report, Mayor.
Moving on to Fire and Safety, Mrs. Noack.
Yes. We had, we got together last Friday, Chief Solgas, and for legislation this evening for the part-timer, Courtney Pratt, and Mr. Voitish was here also, and we got to meet her and get to know her a little bit better and know what she is looking to do for the village, and I think she'll be a great fit.
Ms. Noack, would you like to do the legislation now, or when we go to the legislation?
We can wait till legislation.
Okay.
As well as, I did talk to the chief about when we had our budget meeting last week about all the questions we have concerning Sudo, and he was gonna talk to Paul about it and get more information for you.
Thank you, Mrs. Noack. Moving on to Builders and Grounds, Mr. Hips.
No report this evening.
Moving on to legislation, Brad.
Thank you, Mayor. First, we have 2018-22, an emergency resolution setting forth the appropriations for the fiscal year 2018, and submitting the same to the county fiscal officer on second reading this evening. Is there a motion to suspend the three reading rule?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hips, seconded by Ms. Domsalsky. All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? Is there a motion to pass?
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion to pass by Mr. Hips, seconded by Ms. Noack. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a couple. I'm a little perplexed with the budget. I know that our budget has to be passed in April of every year, and it seems like every year we come down to the wire, and it's always...
It's actually March, it's not April.
Okay. We can't get extensions if we need to go longer, but my point is that the department heads probably know what their budget is by the end of the year. I'm kinda, like I said, I'm perplexed, because I think our budgets can be done a lot sooner than when they are. And I'm also with having one meeting with each department head. I'd like to have a second meeting to see what has changed and how we're gonna go forward with it. In the same way with the general fund, it would be nice to know that after we got together and we talked, if there was anything that was gonna be changed, or if our ideas, you know, weren't gonna be considered, what have you. But I think there should be a little more input with council here. It's only my feeling, of course. Everyone knows the issues that I've had and the things that I've questioned. I mean, just with the $40,000 for the finance assistant, I personally would like to know if we have interviewed anybody for it, or if we, we do have a lady that does our sewer billing that used to be the assistant there. She was contacted.
Gary, if we would've interviewed anyone, you would've been contacted, 'cause you're ahead of the committee.
Thank you, sir. But like I said, it would be, before I would put that into a budget, I would like to see different avenues traveled, because we're not worried, and the finance director told us, the little things add up to big things sooner or later, and hopefully we don't get the big hits, but we're worried about the police contract coming up now. And to me, that might be a way that we could offer that person maybe half of the $40,000 and have the extra money to help cover what we think might happen with the police department. Like I said, it's just my thoughts, and I wanted to get that out there, that it would be, it would be nice to have a follow-up meeting, you know, about every time we have a budget meeting.
Gary, I appreciate your thoughts. But, you know, when we went through the budget and we asked if there are any questions, we were all, I mean, did anyone hear any questions after that? We were all kind of on board with what was happening. I don't think we need to have another meeting when we already know where we're going. I mean...
Well, well, like I said, and some of the, one of the questions I had in those meetings was absolutely for that position. One of the things that I was disappointed with were, we're only gonna put mulch down for the playgrounds, and we're not gonna do anything for the parks this year.
Well, the, well, here's...
But yet, we still have $10,000 in our budget to put flowers on Route 8, and yes, we wanna make it look nicer, but I also feel we should be doing something for the citizens also, so...
We do stuff for the citizens every day.
Just getting my point out.
We do roads, we do sidewalks, we do snow plowing, we do...
You're right.
Everything for...
You're right. We fix the roads for us to snow plow. That's correct. And to have nice roads to drive on, that's correct.
Yeah.
But what do we give back to the residents? I think we should be doing more for our residents.
We give senior trash back. We give a lot of things back. Senior snow plowing.
Senior snow plowing, senior trash. But, you know what, Mayor, with our budget the way it is, why aren't we doing trash for everyone?
Because that's $230,000.
You're right, it is. And we should be able to manage that somehow in our budget. And it's only my opinion, of course, but I'm, like I said, I'd like to make my points and...
Well, you're a department head for many years, Gary, and you know, and you know that we put things in the budget, you know, at a higher amount, so we don't have to go back and do what you said we shouldn't be doing, is re-appropriating.
Well, we re-appropriated all last year, right, Mayor? So, you're saying we shouldn't be doing that?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that's what you said.
Okay. I'm just trying to get my point out there. I'm not trying to cause an argument.
And, and if, and if more money comes in, if the money comes in, like, we hope it does, we can re-appropriate to do the parks, Gary.
That would be great.
That's the whole reason why we kinda stepped back and said we're gonna drop it, because 20, we just found out that 23% of our budget's gonna go to the state of Ohio. That's reason for us to cut back.
Absolutely, it is. We should be cutting back everywhere, overtime everywhere.
And we have. Okay, moving on. Thank you for your comments, Gary.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Anyone else have any discussion points to add? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor of passage?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All opposed?
No.
Mr. Cher?
Yes.
Ms. Noack?
Yes.
Mr. Voitish?
No.
Mr. Magistrally?
Yes.
Mr. Hips?
Yes.
Ms. Domsalsky?
Yes.
Okay. The resolution is adopted, five votes to one. Next is 2018-28, an emergency resolution confirming the mayor-director of Public Safety's appointment of Courtney Pratt as a part-time police officer on first reading. Is there a motion to suspend the three reading rule?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Noack, seconded by Mr. Hips. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All opposed? Is there a motion to pass?
Motion to pass?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Noack to pass, seconded by Mr. Hips. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to add something. As Mrs. Noack said, we had the meeting Friday, and my opinion, everything went very, very well, and I think that she's gonna give us some new avenues to also help out our local communities that surround us.
All in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Okay. The resolution is passed. Next is 2018-29, an emergency ordinance amending Section 1280.08 of the zoning code relating to sign enforcement on first reading. I would recommend that we have a first read today and put this on second reading next meeting. Take our time with this amendment. The main purpose of this amendment is that, well, one of the purposes is to clean up some old language, and the other one is to give a little bit more flexibility to the building and zoning inspector. Right now, no matter what kinda sign it is, there's, you know, automatic 10-day citation, I mean, 10 days of notifying of the violation before you can cite somebody, and a lot of times with temporary signs, you know, you can do that. It can get taken down and put back up, and it's, there's a little bit of a runaround there. So, the idea is to give the building and zoning inspector flexibility. In certain instances, it can be within 24 hours, if that's reasonable, to take the sign down. And if the person has a prior violation within the last two years, that they can be just automatically cited for a subsequent violation without having to go through the notification process, so...
Brad, it was my understanding from the council president that you wanted to leave this on first reading?
Yes. And then, next is 2018-30, an emergency ordinance establishing Section 1268.11 of the Planning and Zoning Code relating to car or truck rental establishments. This present ordinance was requested by the mayor, and again, I'd recommend a first reading for tonight on that, and that we take our time with that, so...
But we already have a resolution that dealt with the rental vehicles.
Car lots.
For car lots, and this kind of, it's the same section. Right after that, we'd talk about car and truck rental, and just for everyone, if, you know, we do have an existing business that's grandfathered in under this ordinance right now. So, it only would apply to subsequent business, I mean, businesses that are in operation at their current location, would have to comply with the new rules. And that's all for the legislation this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Brad. At this time, is there any, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're gonna go over there right now. At this time, I wanna deviate a little bit. Brad has a message from the police department.
Chief Solgas is sick, but he did prepare a report and wanted some information conveyed. He did say that officers attended various trainings during the month of February, so they're continuing to go to training to try to improve their knowledge in various aspects of the job. They're still working on the Lexi-Paul policies. The policy section is almost complete, and then they're gonna start working on the procedure section and the rules and regulations. So, hopefully, this year, this process will be concluded, and it will be a benefit to the police department. We're still working on the K-9 unit to fully implement that program. I know Sudo has been working with Officer Gramlich, and he was involved in a drug arrest last week on a traffic stop, so it's already paying dividends. Detective Bureau are checking backgrounds for possible candidates for part-time officers for the department, and there were 837 calls for service in the month of February 2018.
At this time, is there any old business, new business, or announcements? I would just like to say thank you, Tricia, for the wonderful job you did with the budget, as always. Always keeping us in the black, and I really appreciate that. You know, I know it's a very, it's a very hard job that you do, but I appreciate everything you do every single day for the community. Thank you.
Excuse me. You asked for old and new business?
Yes.
Okay, how about new, new business, perhaps? Gary has a point. This is old, because we already got a budget for this year. But I don't know how, what we gotta do as far as the, the senior citizens do have garbage pickup, and Gary does have a good point that perhaps, maybe next year, in 2019, we could work on putting garbage pickup in our budget for all the residents of Northfield, all the people who own apartment complexes, the whole, everyone, because we all, I mean, I, we're doing great things for the people here in the village, as far as the roads are beautiful, the service department's beautiful, everything is, we're keeping up with a lot of things. But again, I'm, I'm saying that, and you, sometimes you'll hear negative things, but one of the things I'd like to try to fit into the budget for 2019, and it could be all of our ideas, or some of our ideas, but I really believe that the idea of having a service for the, for the trash would be a really great thing. So, if I need to help with this, or if I wanna try to propose it some way, I would really, I got Gary's back on this one, and anybody else who thinks that might be a good idea for next year.
Keith, this isn't to throw fuel on a fire, pick a fight, but you were absent from the budget meeting. You didn't hear the stern warning we got on how we're spending funds and how we need to watch things and pinch pennies. That's a very, very large ticket item. That's a quarter, half to a quarter of a road project in funding that we would not be able to take in. So, just look for the funding if you'd like to do it, figure out where it comes from, but understand that that's a quarter to a half of a road project. And if we wanna continue doing these improvements and making that right...
I appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying, and excuse me for last week when I did not make the finance meeting, but extenuating circumstances caused me not to be here, and I am, I apologize in advance for not showing up at that meeting. But I'm sure all of you are pretty competent and took care of business last week, and I appreciate that very much.
And just to let everyone know, the garbage contract is up this year at the end of September, so we will be rebidding the contract in the next couple of months. And I would expect, you know, based on bids other communities gotten, that the price is going to increase. We will bid it with curbside recycling this time to see, you know, as we usually do, if that's an option council wants to move into, and we'll do it various with containers, without containers, and see how the bids come out. But that's, you know, we're gonna know that over the course of the summer, so...
So, the price for all trash services has gone up pretty extensively, because they've lost their avenue to get rid of the recyclables. All of our plastics used to be shipped to China. China's no longer receiving our recyclables, so there's no reason for them to take them in anymore, and they're charging a higher price to do everything that they do with trash to recover it.
But we also just put in the simply recycling to handle all that.
Simple recycling handles household goods. Uh, if you were here for the presentation, they handle cloth items, shoes, things like that.
Yeah, they, they don't handle.
They don't have no plastics or anything.
That type of thing. But hopefully that'll help out, you know, with the bid because, you know, it's gonna reduce some of the landfill.
You know, I, and I just have to intervene here, you know, I, I appreciate that you guys wanna do garbage for the whole community. I do appreciate that. But, you know, there comes a time when you have to listen to the finance director of this town that knows, that knows the finances and where we're heading. And you know what? When she says we can't do it, we can't do it. Bottom line.
It sounds almost like a campaign slogan.
I would agree, because Gary's running for mayor.
So do flowers on Route 8. Oh, no, that's part of the beautification process.
That was part of my, that's part of what I was elected for. And you, and, and you were here when you, when we had that, hold on, Gary, hold on.
Sure.
You were here when we had all these people packed in this room, and what did they say? What did they say, Gary? They wanted to see improvement on Route 8 now. How many people were in this room? It was packed, so we're not gonna do what the people asked us to do? Is that what you're saying?
That's not what I'm saying. A comment was made that it seemed like it was a political statement and. It sounds like a campaign slogan. Okay. Garbage is.
We all know you're running for mayor, Gary. We all know it.
How do you know that when we haven't even done it yet? We all gotta pay for our garbage. It's our garbage. We'll pay for it, we'll take care of it. The seniors are a different story. Do not throw me in a category with the seniors on a fixed income. Do not do that, because I can pay for my own garbage. And I'm sure every working person out there, every person with a part-time job can afford to pay for their garbage. Every community pays for their garbage. It turns into millions of dollars over a 10-year period. Let's think about that. I mean, you're looking at a point here. It sounds great. Let's give away the house.
I'm sorry, Mr. Magistrelli, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm very sorry.
You know, it's, we talked about this earlier.
Whose campaign are you talking about?
I'm, I'm just, it's, I didn't say that. I said, we're talking, it sounds like a campaign slogan. We're talking about giving somebody something that everybody pays for.
What are you doing? We're having a meeting.
I'm telling you, well, I'm just, I'm disagreeing with it.
Okay, but I don't understand.
I'm disagreeing with it, it's my opinion.
I don't know.
I mean. You're allowed, we're all allowed our opinion. Independence pays for their own garbage. That's why we're all here. It's, it's great. Independence pays for their own garbage. And yet we can still work on, work together, and that's a great thing. These are very wealthy communities. We're nowhere in that category.
Let, let me just put it to you this way. $40 million in infrastructure projects, but we're gonna give free garbage pickup. Does anyone else have anything to say?
I would just like to say that the Easter egg hunt was a huge success. Hey, it's, I'm kinda being a positive, you know? Um, the kids had a great time. Um, I'd like to take, thank Gretchen Apana for the, the petting zoo. The kids just love that, and it's gonna continue. Um, it, we had great weather. The kids stayed in their little areas. They tried to go into the others, and I say, hey, that's not your age. They put the egg right back down and went into their group. I mean, they were well behaved, and thank you, Julie, for being there and being a part of it. I thought it went very well.
Is this the second year we did it?
This is the second year. Is there anyone else that has any old business, new business or announcements? Hearing none, adjournment?
I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion to adjourn made by Ms. Tomzowski, seconded by Mr. Voitish. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? We adjourned at 8:04.